Good evening, citizens of Portsmouth. I call to order the meeting, special meeting of the Portsmouth City Council. And Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, sir, Mr. Barnes.
Here.
Mr. Battle.
Here.
Mrs. Lucas Burke.
Here.
Mr. Moody.
Here.
Dr. Whitaker.
Present.
Mr. Woodard.
Here.
Mayor Glover.
Here.
Mayor, okay.
Madam Clerk, would you read the item that we are considering for this meeting?
Yes, sir, appointment of the city manager.
Councilman Moody?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, I move that we suspend council rules to allow public speakers tonight.
Second.
We have a motion and a second? Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Yes, sir, Mr. Barnes.
No.
Mr. Battle.
No.
Ms. Lucas Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Moody?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
No.
Mr. Woodard?
No.
Mayor Glover?
Yes. Madam Clerk, we are in need of a motion and a second?
We have a... The item before you, sir, is the appointment of the city manager.
Okay, we are in need of a motion and a second? And is there any discussion, well, motion and a second? Dr. Whitaker, sir, you have the floor.
Yes, I move that the Portsmouth City Council appoint Tanya Chapman as city manager with a start date of June 10th, 2022, at a beginning salary of $200,000, and that her contract details be negotiated by the mayor and interim city attorney on behalf of the city council.
Thank you, sir. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. And now, the floor is open for discussion, and I would like to start off the discussion as the elected leader of the city of Portsmouth. The mayor will not negotiate any contract, and has not negotiated any contract with any individual. The mayor was not notified until this moment who that candidate was. I want to say, I want to say to my colleagues, it is highly unfortunate, and I want to say to the citizens of the city of Portsmouth, we are an elected body, all seven of us. There is no this council or us council. Because we were elected, it is incumbent upon all of us to work together to put the best leader and leaders in place to move our city forward. We have not followed a process. We have not done a qualified background check, and as the elected leader of this city, I will not anymore put this city at risk. You know, and I want to get real, it's, 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 it boggles my mind that some folk would think that they are allowed to conduct themselves in this way without going through the proper process. I called, I called the personnel committee, Dr. Whitaker, on Thursday, last week, and to ask him about this appointment. He did not return my phone call. So I just want you to know, if we're gonna be transparent, if we're gonna be real, as folks like to say, as the mayor, the only dog that I have in this fight is what's in the best interest of the citizens of Portsmouth. We cannot, and I suspect Ms. Chapman is a wonderful lady, but we cannot, after what we have been through, after this council has totally, without any remorse, taken another human being's livelihood and threw her away, and to expect that we would think that they could bring someone before us and they could do it again is mind-boggling to me. So yes, I'm gonna take personal and mayoral privilege today, sir. I'm going to say what I want to say. There is a spirit, there is a spirit on this council. There is a spirit on this council that is not the right spirit. And I pray to God that whatever needs to be done will be done. But I will not support a candidate who has not been vetted, once again, who has not gone through the proper hiring process. And I will say this other thing, we have before us an appointed interim city manager who was the deputy city manager and RCFO, a capable professional, who has seen this city through two successful audits on time, who has seen us through a budget cycle, two budget cycles, that had fully funded our schools, who also has helped us to retain a stellar credit rating with our credit agencies. And if there is anyone beyond Angel Jones who is more deserving of the city manager position, it would be our deputy city manager, Mimi Terry. So here, here's my final comments, because I am told I talk too much. But my mama used to tell me, you don't talk too much if you have something to say. So in the words of my mama, I'm gonna keep talking. 'Cause I'm the mayor. But if, if these folks, I want you all to take a good look at what's up here. And, and let me just say this, if you allow, because you put us here. If you allow for this miscarriage of justice to go on, you know, Dr. King said, and I'm gonna go there, because this city needs to hear it, a doctrine of black supremacy is just as dangerous as a doctrine of white supremacy. And as a black man, as a black man, as you can clearly see, I've been one for 57 years. So I can determine, I think I'm a pretty good judge of what it looks like to be treated a certain way. But still, I rise. And we will rise. But I need your help tonight. And I need your help going forward. Thank you all for listening. Mr. Battle, you have the floor, sir. We need to have order in the chamber.
I have a best, I have a best friend that, that recently passed, and his name was John Hatcher. And we graduated from... Please, please allow, please allow the councilmen to speak, please.
Sit down, please. Could you please be seated, Mr. Battle, so you can speak into the mic where they can hear you, sir? Please, please. We want to give you the opportunity to be heard, sir.
Again, John Hatcher and I graduated from high school together, and we were best of friends. And we remained friends throughout our careers, and he's passed recently. And I told him that I wanted to run for office because I wanted government to work for all the people. And he looked at me, and I said, what's the most important thing that you have to learn? And he said, Paul, you gotta eat manure. I said, what, John? He said, yes, you have to eat manure. And I'm saying, what do you mean, John? He said that the people will sometimes misjudge and be mischaracterized and be fed on by political folk who play political football, and, and you have to take that. Now, I have no tools for this. I have no tools for disrespectful people, because I wasn't brought up like that. I've never disrespected you, and I beg you to hear me out. See, John was right. See, I don't have to take this, but I'm taking this for the citizens. So this government...
Please, please, let, let, let him speak.
So this government will work for everybody and not the shadow groups that have a tendency to pull the strings. Now, now, what happened to you remembering that your taxes are too high? What happened to you remembering that your children are not being developed properly and you don't have programs for them? What happened to you and what part of that you don't understand that that man and these four council members, that you're throwing stones at has increased economic development in the last three years, $1.2 billion? What is it that you don't understand that when the wind turbine gets here and we can supply 625,000 homes with electricity, that we're not gonna be able to go to Vepco and ask them to roll back your taxes if we're not here? What part of these things are you not understanding? You have to remember that this has to work for everybody. Now, I, I understand that when shadow government is threatened, it feeds disinformation to its people, and it gets them to act similar to the way we're acting. But let me say this, stop feeding into rhetoric. I'm trying to make this government work for all of us, and it is. Wait, wait. And if you decide to vote me out, then do... That, that's okay. But just, just remember one thing, you are a minority and it's other citizens out here who want this government to work for everybody. And, and I'm gonna respectfully...
Please, please, we have to have order in the chamber.
I have no, I have no tools for disrespectful people. I, I have no education to prepare me for you. So if you're gonna continue, please continue. But if I vote for somebody and I had a choice, and I'm gonna vote for Tanya Chapman because she'll give the government back to all the people. And if we follow people like those folk, we'll be a doomed city. Disrespectful people are the most destructive thing to our planet. Thank you all.
Thank you, sir. Councilwoman Lucas Burke, ma'am, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you all for being here tonight, and, and I especially want to thank the 10 to 12 women who came into the restroom with me last week, rubbing my back, throwing hands, praying for me, changing my mood, because I was clearly upset, that, you know. I appreciate you getting me back on track, because everyone knows me in this council, and you know me throughout the city, and that's not, not who I am. But when you pushed me there, you know, I had to go there, and I did. So my apologies if I offended anyone, but I had to get it out, and that's how I chose to get it out last week. But it is disheartening to me that we are gathered again in this council chamber one week after the unjust firing of Angel Jones, our city manager, who we believe had been doing a great job. But we're here tonight for another act of bullying and exploiting women. And, and I believe that this tactic might have been brought to me because I am a woman, a black woman, and they want to replace a black woman with another woman, but it don't work like that in our book. Women, we don't put other women down, especially for one who had been doing her job, and that this is another Delta woman that they want to replace with a Delta woman, that they want to use a Delta woman to take out one and to replace one, not, not in my book. We have a council member who has elevated himself and convinced some of the others that he is the de facto mayor, changing agendas, coming up with their own agendas, creating agendas that we had, had no idea. You know, when you're working together with a council, all of y'all elected all of us to serve you, and we should be able to come together and work together, but we haven't been able to do that. So a change has definitely, has to come. Everyone knows that I'm an advocate for many of the issues that have affected our community. I'm passionate about some things, not passionate enough about some other things, but when you bring something to me, I'm like a pit bull with pearls, making sure that I stick to it to get it to change. However, I do, I do not appreciate the male-dominated council that we have here politically prostituting me and other women to be those persons to serve their ill-willed agendas. So while it was tough for me to say no to my Delta sister, Tanya Chapman, I believe that she made a great chief of police, and I was deeply hurt when she was released. Right now, I don't think it's the time for her to come back into this toxic situation. So while we are being bullied and exploited as women, it brings me to memory the things, the words that Shirley Chisholm said, that we, as women, we unbossed and we unbought. And today, I will be unbossed and unbought to go for their agenda to bring in another woman to replace Angel Jones tonight. And also, I'll close with, in the words of Fanny Lou Hayman, you all know who I'm talking about. I'm sick and tired of being sick and tired, and I'm sick and tired of being bullied by this council to, to, to take their agenda when we have an agenda that we should all be following. So I asked this council, we took a long time and deliberation back in the closed session, I asked them to delay this vote until January, when the new council comes on place, when we will have a new set of people to pick a city manager that we have all vetted, that our citizens have vetted, that our citizens get to have some say in, and just wait, just wait six months until we are, we are stable, because right now, we not even stable as a council. So, but they refused, they refused to do that, so we're gonna go forward with a, a vote tonight. And I feel like the motive is not right, and I don't want to put Tanya Chapman in another situation where she'll be fired again from a position because she's not doing what somebody wants her to do. So, not that I'm voting against Tanya Chapman, I'm voting against this process, and I think that we need to wait until January, when you all decide who you want to serve you, and we would do the right thing by picking a city manager to serve us all.
We need to have order. Councilman Moody, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. I think my colleague, Lisa Lucas Burke's idea of deferring this is a good idea, but before I make that into the form of a substitute motion, I too want to thank you for being here tonight. You're here tonight because you care about the city, you're over the embarrassment that is going out from the city hall to the whole state, really. The, the fact that we are looking dysfunctional as a city, all of that has got to stop. There's no reason for that to happen. You know, we were blindsided a week ago with the unjust firing of, of Ms. Jones, and then tonight, we find out the name of a city manager. City manager, in our case, is the CFO of the city, the, the, the person who operates the day-to-day activities of our city. And three of us are blindsided by who that person is gonna be. Throughout, throughout this week, we've heard names via Facebook, Twitter, Messenger, scuttlebutt, if you may, on, on who that person is gonna be, and that's not the way it should work. There is a process involved, and, and I've been involved in processes, so has this council. We've been through processes. If I were, if I were to come into a meeting and say, I want Willie Joe to be the next city manager without a process, some of the folks on here would crucify me for that. You don't, even if you own your own business, you don't hire the top position in your business without a process. It's not good business. So tonight, what we're getting ready to do is not good business for our city. Not at all. And I think my colleague was correct, it should be deferred until the process, a transparent process, if you may, can select the next CFO of our city. So, Mayor, I'm making a substitute motion for the city manager position to be deferred.
Second.
Councilman Woodard, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to make sure that we all understand that this isn't about any hatred towards black women or whatnot, or any... Just want to speak my piece, that's it. Just want to speak my piece. I come from a strong family, I come from a strong grandma, flossy Maddox, she lived out Parkview, and she raised nine, and she raised nine children. One thing about it, one thing about it is that I think on this council, we do lack communication. People are insinuating, people knew information before we came into these, this chamber, and people are, and people are insinuating that we know information before we come here today. My colleagues, my colleagues have acknowledged that they haven't, they haven't communicated certain issues with us. And the thing is, we want to make sure that we...
Come on, we have to have order, please.
We want to make sure that we do have all the details before we are continuing to pick a city manager and continuing to go throughout this process. And I think that's the right thing to do. Hopefully, you guys will kind of chop down some of this rhetoric that's out here about people having secret meetings that did not happen. People, people are, people are meeting behind closed doors, the only things, the only thing, the only thing that me, as an elected official, want to do is to make sure that we, as, as colleagues, can make the right decision. And some of these decisions are gonna be hard, okay? We are a divided council, and I am sometimes a swing vote. And it's very hard. And it's, and it's very hard to do, but the thing is, but the thing is, we want to make sure, I want to make sure that I consider everything when we are, when I'm making decisions. And hopefully, tonight, we can make the right decision. We do have an interim Mimi Terry, we do have an interim Mimi Terry, and our city has suffered a lot over the course of a couple of days.
Please, order, please. We have to have order. Allow the councilmen to finish.
Once again, I talked to my colleague, Lisa Lucas Burke, and she will acknowledge that we did have a conversation, and some of these things that I did not know about. In the chambers, we had additional conversations, and some of these things that I did not know about, because we all have a different pool of knowledge, and that's what we're supposed to do each and every time we meet. We're supposed to share information with each other. And I felt like, on certain occasions, we have not completed that process or completed that task. So I do appreciate you guys coming out tonight. I do think that we should defer this process.
Please, please, we need to have order in the chamber. Please, we need to have order in the chamber. Please.
Don't clap for me now. Don't clap for me now. I just want to do the right thing. So, so I'm not putting a date on, I do want to talk to our, our clerk, Deborah White, see when our next meeting is, just to be clear.
Your next meeting is June the 14th.
June the 14th. Well, at this time, I, I think we, we still want to make sure that we have someone in place, or considering someone, so I think over the course of that time, we should still be looking at what we can do, put a special meeting together or whatnot. So I think right now, like I say, we can stop some of this heartache, and we can continue to go by our lives and, and just, just do the right thing. Thank you.
Madam, Madam City Attorney, we had, we had a motion on the floor and second, and we have a substitute motion. I believe that the, the motion on the floor takes precedent?
You need to act on the substitute motion.
Act on the substitute motion?
Yes.
Okay. All right? That being said, we have a motion and second on the substitute motion to defer this matter until further discussions take place, after further discussions will take place, but we'll defer it, just to defer it. We have, we're gonna defer, we have a motion until January, that's, that's what, that's what Councilwoman Burke said. So, Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Mr. Barnes?
No.
Mr. Battle?
No.
Mrs. Lucas Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Moody?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
No.
Mr. Woodard?
No.
Mayor Glover?
Yes.
Next council meeting. I said, next council meeting.
Mr., Councilman Woodard, Councilman Woodard, sir, you, you have the floor. I, I can tell you from the process, just sharing with you about the process, and you have been here and you have been in on the process of hiring a city manager, it, it will take some time for us to have discussions and deliberations and to go back out and seek qualified candidates. So it would be, it would be very difficult to have that decision totally, I believe, by January the 14th. Excuse me, by June the 14th, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, by June the 14th. So, so, so perhaps there's a time that is, is, is a little bit more acceptable that you would wish to propose in your motion?
I make a motion for June the 14th.
What is your point of order, sir?
There is a motion on the floor, and there was a substitute motion that was voted upon, and so it is now back to the main motion, and I would ask the city attorney for the advice on that.
That would be correct, you need to act on the main motion now.
That is correct. So let us take the vote on, on, on the main motion. The main motion, and would you read the motion again, Madam Clerk?
The motion before city council is to appoint Ms. Tanya Chapman as city manager at a salary of $200,000 with a start date of June 10th, with the understanding that the mayor and the interim city attorney would negotiate the contract.
And we have the motion and the main motion, the motion on the floor, and it has been seconded?
Correct.
Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, sir, Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Battle?
Yes.
Mrs. Lucas Burke?
No.
Mr. Moody?
No.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Mr. Woodard?
No.
Mayor Glover?
No. That is, that is, that concludes, ladies and gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen, that concludes our meeting for this evening. If there is no other meeting for the good of the order, this meeting is adjourned.